All right, well, let us resume the August 11th, 2020, Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Norfolk. All our members except one are present. We also have Richard McCarthy, the Town Planner, and Betsy Fejel, our Administrator, with us this evening. All right, our first order of business this evening is to discuss Six Hill Street Site Plan Special Permit and Outdoor Storage Stormwater and Earth Removal Permits, continued from July 14th, 2020. Who's here to speak to that?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Edward Cannon, on behalf of the applicant.
Hello, Edward. Please go ahead.
Well, I very much appreciate the board continuing this from the last meeting. I was away and not able to take part. This is a request, Mr. Chairman, to withdraw the application. It became clear to the applicant that this site plan application was not going to be approved, or at least be approved in a manner that would work for the applicant. So he's gonna sort of gather himself and come back with a much less intensive plan. But you know, right now, it's just, I think, for him, the best course of action would be to, he can't really work with this plan, and he knows this plan has met with a lot of resistance, not only from the board, but from folks in the neighborhood. And rather than banging his head against the wall, he just thinks the best course of action is to withdraw this application and resubmit a revised plan.
All right, and where do you stand, Attorney Cannon, with the business of the lot definition?
That's in process. There are two lenders on that property, both of whom have to approve any reconfiguration of the lot lines. One of those lenders is the SBA, and they're, they traditionally move at a snail's pace. These days, they move at a glacial pace. So, you know, we're working with those. And forgive me, I just found out about this last week that they both had to sign off on this. And so we need to have something that they would approve, and then we can submit that to the board. So we don't, I didn't realize that. I thought we would have a plan this evening that we could wrap that aspect up, but I do not, and I do not know when that will be forthcoming. Hopefully, relatively soon, but I'm not sure.
All right, any discussion by board members?
Not for me.
Gary?
No, no, I'm fine.
Chad?
So you're withdrawing the entire application? Is that correct, Ed?
Correct.
Okay.
John?
Hold on a second.
All right, then, the chair will entertain a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice the application for Site Plan Special Permit for Outdoor Storage, Stormwater, and Earth Removal.
Is there any public comment?
Hello?
Is there any public comment?
Well, let's make the motion, and then we'll have an open discussion about it.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
So the chair needs a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, before we vote on that, someone in the audience, Mr. Quaglery, in particular, wishes to make a comment. Go ahead, Mr. Quaglery.
Thank you. Well, I would just like to take 45 seconds of your time. I'd like to summarize what we found out after two years of this at Four and Six Hill Street. The building inspector approved an illegally filed F-11A six months prior to the owner owning the property. It's not allowed under the ZBA, excuse me, under Norfolk zoning. The building inspector approved that F-11 with conditions that were never met. The building inspector allowed occupancy of the F-11 without the conditions met. The applicant then submitted a site plan application as two lots conforming in size and use, which are false. The applicant's attorney and design team knew that was, a site was one lot as defined at the Registry of Deeds. Rich had Town Council opine on the status, the lot status, and the decision by the Town Council was that it's one lot from 1954. So the planning board has been misled for two years as this site should have been filed as an expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming lot in use. In 2018, the building inspector stated in the email that the occupancy could be only on the commercial lot. The building inspector issued a cease and desist on the owner in the last month, and the owner currently occupies behind the house, which was off limits per the building inspector. The owner currently has outside stores without fencing, and these are just some of the pertinent facts. There are so many more, and I just wanted to make that summary known as this plan is being withdrawn.
All right, Mr. Quaglery, anyone else care to comment or ask a question?
Oh, sorry.
I have one question of Rich. Rich, if the, if the board votes to accept the request for withdrawal without prejudice, is a new F-11 required?
A new F-11? Well, I believe Attorney Cannon stated that they're gonna be returning with a site plan to the planning board for a scaled-down site or use of the site. So I don't think there's a need for a new F-11.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. The vote will be taken by roll call. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't get that?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Hunt? You're muted. I can't, I can't.
You got me now?
Yep.
I'm gonna abstain as I missed the discussion.
Very well, okay. Chair votes aye.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yep, all right. The second item on our agenda is Six Sherwood Drive. I believe we've received a request to continue. Is that true, Rich?
That is. We had a, we had a conference meeting yesterday, and going through the, some of the comments, the decision was that it made sense to kind of tackle those, go through them, and then work on it and have a revised plan for the September meeting, when we'll need to, it'll be a public hearing for the earth removal associated with that project then.
Okay, there's nothing really contentious. It's just a matter of whether, whether the applicant could respond effectively to beta between the time he got Beta's letter and this meeting, so.
Yeah, well, there wasn't anything. It was more the, it was working through the stormwater design in the sense of trying to make sure it's constructible, what's on plan is constructible within the field. So they're gonna make some adjustments to the stormwater system. That was really the essence of the issue.
Right. All right, Chair will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Site Plan Special Permit for Outdoor Storage for Six Sherwood Drive Dover Trucking.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
You need to vote to continue that to?
September 8th, September 8th at?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, right.
Motion for the amendment.
I know I said that, you just couldn't hear it.
Thank you.
All right, next item on our, our agenda is Alexander Estate Subdivision. Mr. Bonvey, is Mr. Bonvey with us this evening?
He is. He is with you, yes. I'm online right now.
Oh, Mr. Bonvey.
How are you?
Mr. McCarthy, you want to start this first, or you want to let Mr. Bonvey go?
No, I can give a quick introduction to the board. So the discussion between the last meeting and today centered around the concern about the weather related to tree planting and paving, and where we ended up landing, where we sit today, is that the weather's broken a little bit, and the tree plantings did go in last week. There are a few more trees that do need to be replaced that Ron knows about, and he's aware of, that have already died. But the course of action is, was more typical. Plant the trees, go in, do the prep work for the roadway, and then follow up with paving the top coat. And, and that's where we're at. I'll let Ron, well, actually, let me just pause before we go to Ron. One of the things I do, I did send out a slide presentation to the board. We did make a field change adjustment with a couple of the plantings, which ended up at the back of the lots that are on Frederickson Road, as opposed to planting way back into the woods. The homeowner, I think the neighbors were all agreeable to that. I understand, agreeable that, so we did plant them, which the homeowners within Frederickson would have a little more enjoyment of those. So we did make that field adjustment in between. We do need to talk about some other trees, but that's not related to, to these trees. But I think we're pointing in the right direction.
All right, thank you, Rich. Mr. Bonvey, go ahead.
So approximately, and I'll be quick, approximately three weeks ago, I approached Rick with, Rich, with the following suggestion. That was, I wanted to plant trees, well, as always, I wanted to plant the trees and then do the paving. I was concerned about weather. I called Blueview Nurseries, who supplied me with the trees, and they were holding the trees, and they said because of the fact that they would be a little bit stressed at a 95-degree temperature, I watched for a weather window. I did pave a couple other sites, and I sent some pictures to Richard and showing him the damage that was done because of the temperature of the road that we were paving. But that's a side note. So being, that being said, we went out and planted an additional 25 trees, I think, last week into, and we did another 12, no, 24 shrubs. So to date, I've planted approximately 100 plantings, whether they be trees and shrubs, about 90% trees, about 10% shrubs. The only thing that I have not planted, to the best of my knowledge at this point, are about four, what they call pin oaks. I'm having a problem in that three of them, I think, on Oak View died, and I've got Blueview Nurseries going out to take a look at them to try to understand why they died, because I'm watering them almost daily. I have a company, one of my guys goes up there with a truck with a watering, a big water vat on it, and waters every plant that we planted. And so there are three pin oaks on Oak View that have not been planted on Lot 9. The homeowner knows that, and there are two or three that are dead on Oak View, or at least look like they're going to die. So that's a total of six. And there are two birch trees on Oak View that are questionable, bringing it up to eight out of the 100 approximate trees and shrubs that we believe are either not there yet or are going to die. My goal is in the next week to take care of that, or next week, in two weeks. I just want to get a weather window. We are ready to start our preparation for paving and to pave. My goal is, and I feel totally attainable, and it will happen, Rich and I, I'm gonna be looking for a release. Why? Because the next meeting you have in September, I will have the road paved, the trees repaired, those six or eight trees replaced, and you'll be sitting with still a sizable bond, and all I need to do is put in some bounds, do some blooming seeding on the edge of the, where the curbing is, and do some trail signs, clean up, and just minuscule things. So that's where I'm, that's where my plans are. I'm hoping that the residents are happier than they have been in the past, and we actually knocked on doors, and we felt that that we had accomplished that task.
All right, thank you for the updates, encouraging news. As far as the next meeting and bond reduction, Rich, we'll need to get DPW to look over Ron's shoulder and confirm the numbers prior to presenting that bond reduction approach to us at the next meeting. Is there anyone in the, in the audience who cares to comment? Any neighbor or landowner who wishes to question Mr. Bonvey?
Hi, this is Carol Thibodeau at 27 Frederickson Road. I guess just a clarification question for Mr. Bonvey. Mr. Bonvey, you talked about lot number nine needing three more trees. I think you said Oak View. Did you mean Frederickson?
I think so. Right, Ron?
I think you. Were you talking about the type of tree?
No, no, the lot. It's actual lot.
I think we've lost Mr. Bonvey's.
Okay. So the birches are on your, well, your lot.
Yeah, and we had, I think it was three pin oaks that Mr. Bonvey decided not to install because the other ones didn't have a very good track record. So I, I wanted to say that he has installed 11 out of the 14 trees. We're satisfied with those. We had.
I'm back.
Oh, there you are.
I apologize. I don't know what happened. I do a lot of Zoom meetings. I apologize.
So, Ron, I was asking a clarifying question. This is Carol Thibodeau at 27 Frederickson.
Yes.
My question was, you talked about a couple birch trees that needed to be replaced, and also three pin oaks that you were not installing in lot number nine. Did you mean Frederickson Road, not Oak View?
Uh, no, I meant Frederickson.
Okay, thank you. So.
Yeah, your lot. So I, so I think your lot needs three pin oaks, but I'm not sure if I want to pit, put pin oaks because they're dying. And so until I get Blueview Nursery out, Mr. Anthony, I forget his last name, who I spoke to today, to look at them and tell me what the deal is. I don't think it makes sense to plant any more of those. I owe you $400, which I agreed to pay you. And there are two birch trees which, and that's $400 for taking down some trees that I should have taken down. And so there are two birch trees, which I believe are stressed. If I were to bet, I'd bet they're not gonna make it.
Yeah, we, what I was also saying, Ron, is that you've planted 11 trees, and, you know, we have just a few things left that you just mentioned, and once those are done, we're completely satisfied with the tree, with the tree work.
Perfect.
Anyone else care to comment or question, raise a question? Well, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Bonvey, and we look forward to seeing you next, next meeting with the paving behind us. And, and as you say, the tree issue is pretty much resolved, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you very much, and enjoy and be safe.
Next item on our agenda, I think we will move by because it deals with reviewing the anticipated A&R plan for Four and Six Hill Street, which has not been provided. So the next one is to review and approve Norway Farms Special Permit Subdivision Modification Decision. Rich circulated that, and I have read it, and I would ask the board for any comments or questions on that decision prior to, to asking for a motion to approve it. So, John, are you okay with that?
Fine.
Mr. Chairman? Gary?
I'm fine.
Chad?
No questions, I'm fine.
Okay, Aaron?
No questions at this time.
Okay, then Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Norway Farms Special Permit and Subdivision Modification Decision. I don't have the number in front of me, Betsy. Can you give me that?
No, I can't. I don't have it in front of me.
All right, but, but we know what it is.
I can, let me.
All right, so we'll take a vote. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
The hunt?
I lied, Walter. I do have questions.
Please ask your question.
I think, I think I got lost in trying to read while you were talking. What are we voting for right now?
This is the Norway Farms Stony Brook, excuse me, Norway Farms Special Permit and Subdivision Modification Decision. They came before us last month, you may recall.
Right. This is for the, the density conversation, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I vote nay on this.
Okay. Mr. Peck, I'm not sure. Did I go by you?
You did not. I vote aye.
Okay, Chair votes aye. Richard, is, is there a second one that we need to do on the sidewalk?
Yes, that's the, so for the record, the decision is 2020-04?
2020-04?
Yes.
Okay. So please amend the motion to include that, Betsy.
And then there's the definitive subdivision modification for the sidewalk construction to allow it in accordance with the plant specs from United Consultants dated May 28, 2020, as it intersects with Norway Farm Drive, and then, which also includes a contribution to the sidewalk fund in lieu of the sidewalk going from Norway Farm Drive up close to One House Lot before Lake Street.
Right. Okay, what's the title of that? I don't have it in front of me. What's the title of that decision?
Yes, yes. Sidewalk Construction Modification and Condition Number One of the Certificate of Action.
All right, Chair will entertain a motion to approve that decision.
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, thank you all for that. Next item on the agenda is Review and Approve 108 North Street/Stony Brook Wildlife Sanctuary Electric Vehicle Charging Station Site Plan Decision. And again, Rich, I'm looking for the number on that one?
Yeah. I'm gonna have to jump into the, my computer, so. I got the notice of hearing. It's 2020-02?
02, all right, thank you. All right, so Chair will entertain a motion to approve the sidewalk modification. The title is described by Rich a moment ago, decision number 2020-02.
So moved.
No, hold on, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about, was it 108 North Street or not?
We're, we're. I'm sorry.
On the sidewalks. The original vote on the sidewalk modification.
Okay, so, so the sidewalk was 2020? I thought you were on 108 North Street.
Oh, the 2020-02 is the 108?
Charging station.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I got it, all right.
Yeah, and the 2020-04 is Norway Farms.
Yep. But the sidewalk is, does it have a separate decision number?
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't.
All right, fair enough. So backtracking and starting again, the Chair will entertain a motion to, to approve the sidewalk modification decision as described by Mr., the title of which is described by Mr. McCarthy a moment ago. Do we have a, a second, a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any further discussion on approving the sidewalk modification for Norway Farms? Hearing none, then Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
And Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. All right, now we can move on to the 108 North Street-Stony Brook Wildlife Sanctuary Electric Vehicle Charging Station Site Plan Decision-2020-02. Chair will entertain a motion to approve that decision.
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, I just gotta make a clerical edit. The, in the opening paragraph.
Do that decision?
Yeah, there's a remnant from LBJ that I use. I have to take that out of there. My LBJ.
Say that again slowly, what?
In the first paragraph, 1, 2, the fourth line down says LBJ Trailers. That was a remnant from the old decision I use as a template.
Okay.
I have to take that out of there.
All right, so, decision as amended by, by Mr. McCarthy to remove those words.
And I'll change the application date as well.
All right, so we'll vote. Mr. Weddleton?
Aye.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right, now, Rich, we turn to you for updates on subdivision complete, completion. We just heard about Frederickson.
Yeah, although I do want, I do want to jump back to Frederickson relative to the trees on the open space. So I'm gonna.
Okay.
I'm gonna just screen share. Hold on a second, I'm gonna screen share. So I have some slides to show you. You see my screen now?
Yes.
Yep.
So if you look in the center of the picture, there are these tall pines. This little hump here is actually the entering point from Oak View Trail to the open space behind the lots off of Oak View and Frederickson. So the, the family to the left here, the gray house are left in the picture, had approached me with concerns about these potentially falling down on the house now that they've been thinned out, you know, with the development of the area. And so the, those trees are the Town Norfolk trees, because that is Town Norfolk open space that they're planted on right now. Those were originally, so they were left originally in the original design, of course, but in light of what's been happening relative to trees, the homeowner asked about consideration of those being cut down. Now, that, that is something that was, it's not Ron, Ron did it per the plan, so those are supposed to be there. But like I said, those are what they would like to just show you. I have a, so that's kind of, that's a side view in the back of the lot looking as they are. So I've been coordinating with DPW. They have their tree company coming out, just to at least get an idea of the quote, what it costs to take those down.
Trees, Rich.
So, and 1, 2, 3. So it was 1, 2, 3, 4. Maybe the scrap, well, maybe these little ones in between.
Why are we taking, why are we taking them down? Why are we considering taking them down?
The reason we're considering is that if these trees fall, they'll fall to their adjacent homes and potential, you know, damaging the home, but also somebody who lives there.
You're saying the resident has no authority themselves to take them down and they live in jeopardy of having a tree going across their house?
Correct, yep. They have no authority. It's town Norfolk land.
Yeah.
It's within the open space.
That's probably a $4,000 or $5,000 bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of where they're located, yeah.
In the crane.
Right.
Yeah, about $1,000 a tree, something like that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we
Rich, where would the money come from?
Well, I mean, I would, we do have open space maintenance money that's been given to the town, so I would, I would consider that.
Why, why is this a planning board consideration?
Right.
Well, the consideration is the planning board, because the planning board approved this plan.
What are we gonna do with all the other trees from open space that are hanging over people's property when they come?
All right, so the idea is to get a quote and then come back to the board and say, it's gonna cost $5,000. Does the board wish to expend that money, right?
Yeah, I agree.
And the money would come from the open space maintenance fund, correct?
Correct. What I can do, just to give you a little bit more background and to, relative to this, I can speak to our, so our human resource director deals with insurance for the town and see what our assurance adjusted, how they would view this as a potential liability that we should.
Well, Rich, then the town should be coming before the planning board with a recommendation to alter the site plan.
And you just give the citizens the right to take the trees down? Is that what they're looking for, or they want someone to remove the trees for them?
No, they want somebody to remove the trees for them. So the trees are on town land. I could, I, well, I can, I can speak to Blythe and we could talk to and evaluate whether there's a risk exposure and whether they should come down, come down or not.
The planning board doesn't have the purview of cutting down trees on open space?
Yeah. We have this situation in every open space plan we have, more than likely.
No, but you have, no, you don't have the purview for that, but you have, you approve the plan, so.
We approve all the open space plans.
Right, so.
This probably is, is common throughout the town, so if other people come back, what are you gonna do?
Well, I guess.
Did we specifically approve those trees to be standing there after everything else was cleared? Or how did, we did?
Yeah, that, this is, this was left to be remain in the approved plan that was done by the planning board.
All we had, Gary, is a path going to the open space, regardless of what the trees are.
Yep, yep.
This wasn't to be cut down, though.
John, what is your recommended solution?
I don't think it's a planning board issue. And I don't think, I think we do this and anybody else that comes that has a tree that's gonna reach their roof, what are you gonna say to them? No?
Yeah, I understand. Okay, so who's issue do you think it is? BPW?
I think it's the town's issue, Benny.
And in the, in the case of the town, who do you mean specifically? Selectmen or?
Selectmen, yeah, so they have the funding. They would have to authorize a DPW to spend the money.
Yeah, okay, all right. Understood.
Well, I can, I can run, I can run through the select board and give their opinion, although I will say you do, you do have some ownership in the sense that you need to, if you don't agree to take these down, I don't think they want to go cutting them down if the planning board disagrees that you, this body approved the plan, though, I mean.
You know, aside from taking them down, you're gonna need a good size excavator to take the roots out and truck them away and then backfill. So it's not an inexpensive job.
No, no.
I guess the first step is to get the cost estimate, right, Rich?
Yeah. Well.
But there's, there's a big presumption here that the trees are unsafe to begin with.
Yes.
I mean, I, there's a lot to be figured out before this becomes a planning board conversation.
Rich, can you go back to the first picture that you showed us?
Sure.
Keep, keep going, there's one more. There you go. Oh, no, that's the one, yeah.
That one?
No. That one. Now, you mentioned that that was the entrance to the open space, correct?
Yes.
It's not marked, is it?
No, that's on Ron's punch list. He has to delineate into this section here.
Yeah, because there's no way anyone would know otherwise that it was an entrance to open space, right?
Right.
Okay.
That's on his punch list. All right, well, I'll run it through the select board and or administrative officer.
Are there any changes that might result on this going forward in the way we delineate site plans in the future, or does someone that goes out and looks at the site make recommendations? Should we change anything based on this, or do we just let this continue where we might have tall trees next to people's houses?
Well, Gary, we actually walked this site and walked all the open space. And as Rich said a moment ago, we, on the plan, we designated which trees remain and which ones are to be taken out, so we tried to do our due diligence in that regard.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All right, continuing with the updates, how about Old Cart Path Fox Run in Bristol Pond Estates, Rich?
Okay, so we did receive yesterday the interim as-built plan for Old Car Path, so we'll have to take a look at that and report back at the next September meeting, September meeting, how it looks compared to the approved plan. And then we can go from there. That was one of the things that the board had requested that we had before we really talked too much further with that one.
Rich, did Bader take a look and match up the as-built to the recorded plan?
No, we just, we just got it yesterday, John.
We're gonna, are we gonna do that before we decide on what to do?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do that. As far, jumping over to Fox Run, I know that they had some not being on and so forth, electrical, as far as I know, I can report, they are all functioning, the streetlights now. From the neighbors who are near them have told me that, so that's a good thing.
How about the scoping of the pipes?
So I'll get to that in a second. So they did replace the dead street trees along Hemingway. And they did replace the Verizon box that was, been broken for a while, so that's positive progress. I didn't receive the video yet for the drainage to take a look at it, so that's, that's the next piece that we need to have. Just to make the planning board aware, I think generally we've had some discussions that I think we might want to consider setting up a firmer policy where, you know, street acceptances happen in the spring. And if, if for some reason they don't make it to the fall, or excuse me, for the spring, they could shift to the fall, but at least target the spring for developers and all the different departments to do their work to make sure everything's in line as we go forward. So I'm gonna be coming back to the board with kind of a tightened up policy and checklist for everybody. Because there's multiple there's multiple departments involved with this now, so for example, like, streetlights is handled by the facilities department. It's not a DPW function, so we need to bring them into the mix much earlier on. And there's DPW, but long story short, we need to tighten, tighten that up a little bit going forward. Bristol Pond, I don't have a, still we're not as-built for them, they don't, they do have they need to go back in and clean up around the streetlights as far as they're just there, the bases, you know, looming and seeding. There is, the sidewalk did sink when they trenched under it along Marshall Streets, that needs to be repaired. And then the trenching, when they did the electrical, needs to be long and seeded. There are a couple of street trees that looks like they might not make it. He hasn't requested a reduction or a release of a lot, but I know the neighbors, you know, spent a lot of time before the board and would like to have some kind of pathway forward towards completion. So I reached out to Elizabeth Maitland, she hasn't the issue right now is getting the as-built plan, so continue. See if we can get that, move that forward as well. Those are the
All right, thank you, thank you, Rich. All right, next item, discussion possible amendment to remove the conservation restriction on 67 Myrtle Street Estate Lot. Go ahead, Rich.
Okay, so I'm working with Walter Conti from what's his develop, Walter Pelcon? Yeah, Pelcon, right?
Yeah, Pelcon.
Okay. So Walter approached me about whether the planning board decision could be amended to not require the conservation restriction because of the I think more or less the administrative work that's associated with it to a degree, and there hasn't been. You know, I did, can't look at the other state lots, there isn't other conservation restrictions in place. I said to him honestly, I, you know, I don't know, that's, it's a call the planning board, so that's why he's here tonight to discuss it with you. I can, I do know, as part of that approval, there was a fence that was to be installed, delineating the limit of disturbance on the back of the lot, that I can show you. If you just bear with me a second, I can pull it up for for refresher and reference. So if you can see on the screen, there's a, there is a limited disturbance delineation actually out in the field with a split rail post fence that's to be installed on the lot. So the, the portion of the lot is this dash line to the back that is to have the conservation restriction on it. The conservation restriction as proposed would be held by the town of Norfolk.
Isn't that, Rich, where are the wetland lines on this, on this plan?
The wetland.
Isn't that all vegetated wetland back there?
This area is much further back. So.
It was mapped when I went through conservation, so there should be a verified line. And the reason that conservation was put back on there is because that, isn't that abutting the town well area?
Not, not this one.
Is it the town well area back up in here, Gold Street?
It's a way, let me go to, hold on, I can pull out to the let me pull up the GIS so we can here's my computer's
I might just say, there are no wetlands on the property. The wetlands are beyond the property.
So this never went through conservation?
No, there was no requirement. There was no wetlands.
So here's the, this is the lot here.
John, maybe you could answer this question that arises in my mind. Is he in front of the right board? Is it the Conservation Commission that places these requirements and not the planning board?
Yes, so is this, is this conservation restriction already recorded?
No, 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 this, this conservation restriction was part of the planning board approval when it came through for the state lot. This wasn't, this wasn't brought by the Conservation Commission, it's not.
This lot was brought through conservation with a previous potential buyer. And the issue with that was, where that was, where that was abutting the town well, and there's a 500-foot radius needed around town wells, and we didn't want that area disturbed, that's my recollection. Other than that, there'd be no reason to put something on where it's all woodland.
No, during the planning board meeting, you requested if I would be willing to put a conservation restriction on it. This never went through conservation.
What, what date was that? How far back was that, do you remember?
Oh, that was in 2018.
So, just for reference, if you look on the screen, do you see the green areas? Those are the town of Norfolk zone twos for our wells.
And where's the lot?
In there, in the lots, right, that's right next, right there where my cursor is. So it's not the wetlands are on this piece here that runs along by the river, but not up, up closer to this lot where it sits.
And where is the river?
River's right here.
So that's a river Zack thing too, with 200 feet from the river.
Yeah, this is.
I think that's probably why we put it on.
Well, we're far away the 200 feet.
This was done in 2018, how come it was never recorded?
It was never, it wasn't, it wasn't, never went through conservation. What happened was that at the planning board meeting, you asked if I would put a conservation restriction on it, and I agreed to do that.
But you never did.
We're in the process, and we started this, I started the first draft March 23rd with COVID, you know, four and a half months later, we're still nowhere near a site of getting this thing completed, and that's why I approached Mr. McCarthy to see if we can amend the permit.
So there, John, just for the rest of the board, there was two form A lots, part of this property, and then, and then this state lot, so the, the two form A lots, the houses have been built, I think they're both sold now, if I'm correct. And this, this is the third lot of which he was developing, so that's why it's
What burden, what burden does, does keeping the conservation restriction place on you, sir?
It's just a time burden. I guess that's been four and a half months, and we're not even closely getting this done resolved. And it seems like it's gonna be like another eight months before this gets completed, and just for a single lot, it's just the time consumption is what's
You get what, you get what resolved?
Well, the, the amount, the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has to approve this. And we've been, you know, it's been going back and forth.
Yeah, but as long as you stay away from that line, you can do anything you want inside, outside of that, that won't hold you up.
No, we cannot get a part of the special permit. No, we cannot get a part of the special permit, was that, uh, building permit wouldn't be issued until this was recorded.
Yeah, that was, that was one of the planning board conditions for, uh, I'll pull up the decision just so you could show you.
I think the reason for the, um, conservation restriction because, um, is for the natural heritage limit of disturbance area, I'm just reading the note.
That's protected habitat then?
Yes.
Gotta get approval, that, that's what, we gotta approval from them to declare where the house is going, and that's what that plan that Richard showed you before. The rest of that, that's why we have to put that picket fence up with that, um, tags saying this is, you know, Heritage Society, please don't disturb it.
So if you can't disturb it, why do you want the conservation restriction lifted? Does it even matter?
We can't, we can't build it until that's recorded, we can't get a building permit, and with COVID, this, this, the time delay has just been extraordinary. I mean, uh, to touch that property, you'd have to get a, a permission from the National Heritage Society to begin with. That's why we have to put the, the picket fence up, to delineate, not to disturb anything beyond that point.
Is the picket fence in place?
No, we haven't got a building permit yet.
Yeah, okay, fair enough, yeah, all right.
Walter, I'd be more apt to, uh, uh, I'd be more apt to amend that decision and let him get a permit as long as he stays away from that, that area.
Why would we amend anything? Why don't we reach out to the committee and see what's the, the holdup is?
The committee is, uh, well, so the committee is a combination of the town and the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, so.
Rich, why don't you give them a call and see what's going on, and tell them, you know, that there's this restriction on the site, it'd be great if they could come out and check it out.
So the, all right, just give you a little more background, just to give you, so, typically with a conservation restriction, there is a baseline environmental assessment that's done um, as part of the conservation restriction. Um, so E O E A, Executive Office of Environmental Affairs, had reached out to the town and said, hey, are you gonna do a baseline environmental assessment? Now, the holder of the conservation restriction is the Norfolk Conservation Commission, but they're not, there aren't necessarily conservation true or conservation related issues, but they would be the one holding the conservation restriction. He could have some outside entity, like a land trust hold the conservation restriction, but in this particular case, it's going through the town, so.
Then have the Conservation Commission come before the planning board and say, this restriction, the planning board placed on this site is not necessary, you, you guys can remove it.
Mr. Conti, don't you still, would you still have to go back to Natural Heritage then?
No, because we've got their approval, we've already had their approval to, um, basically what we cleared was the, the field that was there, and we haven't disturbed anything beyond that, we've already got their approval for that.
To leave the field alone?
No, to leave the woods alone. As you mentioned, uh, what Rich McCarthy's, uh, plan that he put up, delineating where that fence goes and non-disturb area, we could disturb everything in front of that fence, nothing behind that fence, we've already got their approval for that.
I will, uh,
Well, it seems that, that, uh, we could, as a board, um, amend our agreement, or our decision, I should say, and, uh, allow, uh, him to apply for, for a building permit in the absence of the, uh, regist- the, the, not the registration, what's the right word?
Recorded.
Recorded, uh, recording of, of this conservation restriction, with the, uh, understanding that, uh, that process will go on, and it will be recorded down the road once the, uh, state gets its act together after the, uh, effect of the COVID, uh, virus. Um, how would that, uh, sit with the rest of the board?
Why, why would we, we don't, we don't, I haven't seen the approval of the, of the commission. I haven't heard from our own Conservation Commission.
Yes, let me, let me just, uh, off, offer a suggestion, Walter, based on what Aaron said. Um, I think the first probably direct path would be to discuss with the commission to see whether this property is in point of fact necessitating a C R restriction, or, you know, the land being on natural heritage is sufficient protection, um, and see what they, their thoughts are, because regardless, you're gonna have to hold a hearing to amend the special permit because it was a condition of it, so there's some time pieces associated with that, so I'll, uh, I'll confer with, with conservation. And I'll, well, Walter will, obviously, commission as well, but I think that makes sense, so I think we'll just table it for tonight, you're at least aware, kind of over the background, and then come back with a potential.
All right, I'm agreeable to that. Anybody, uh, have any other comments on, on this, uh, topic? I'm reluctant to, by the way, I'm reluctant to, uh, just remove that restriction without the Conservation Commission chiming in, so I think Rich's, uh, point is well taken, and Aaron's point.
I, I think it would also be helpful, Rich, to have a little bit of the history of why we put that restriction on, maybe a little meeting minute research so that we're not guessing.
Exactly.
Okay, so we will revisit this next month.
Okay.
Any comments from, from the gentlemen?
Oh, thank you very much for your time.
Well, you're welcome, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see, uh, Rich, need for associate planning board member, do we have any, uh, names that have come forward, Rich?
Not as of yet, no.
Any board member have any suggestions? I wish I did, but I don't.
Well, Rich, we were talking about that gentleman today, that was interested in the B one committee, maybe.
Yeah, I was.
Maybe make the offer for the, uh.
Yeah, so there was somebody who contacted Aaron about being on the B one, I've got a scheduled call to talk to him tomorrow and see, uh, with his level of, uh, interest and commitment, he may be able to commit to, and maybe associate member might be a good, uh, a good fit.
Okay, good. Thank you, uh, okay, discussed potential zoning articles for fall town meeting, um, F eleven site plan approval and conversion of single family dwelling, E decimal, two decimal, F to two family, contractor headquarters along earth removal equipment, so those are three that you want to propose, why don't you talk to us about them?
Okay. So I'll, um, talk to at least maybe the simpler in one sense, uh, the, so the conversion, I'm gonna actually screen share so I can put up.
You want to take them in order and tell us about the F eleven first?
I can do that. I'm trying to go easier first, but. All right, so, all right, so we've had, um, we heard back from the A G and the, the new F eleven process has been in place since roughly February of this year, we've had one, two, three, um, four F elevens that we've evaluated, um, with the new process, and we've had some questions about the old F eleven that have raised questions about the, uh, the new F eleven, in particular, um, if someone is seeking enforcement of F eleven, who is the one that would, um, hear appeals? Well, actually, sorry. If somebody saw enforcement of F eleven through the zoning, the building commissioner, who would hi- uh, who would hear appeals? Now, in the F eleven bylaw, it does already have the ability for the planning board under F eleven A two to make changes to a modification, so if somebody files for F eleven determination between Bob, myself, and the review, and it says, I think it's, it's, um, it could be subject to a modification, not a full site plan review, it will, it would have to go to the planning board for modification, which require a hearing, the planning board could convert it up, if you will, to a full site plan review, if you felt that it needed more, uh, review. What is so, what is somewhat silent and open to interpretation is the F eleven A one, which is site plan approval not required, and so, one of my suggestions is that that provision of the bylaw would go to, we are sending them to the planning, we are sending them to you, and you see them, but actually formalize the process where they would go to you, the board, and that if you saw something in the application and the determination that you felt warranted uh, modification, that the chair of the planning board or the designee could review it and say, listen, I think we need to call a meeting to consider uh, modification of that determination, so it wouldn't necessarily automatically go to an appeal to the Z B A, it would formally get to the planning board, and there would be some timeframes associated when the board would receive it, um, which was to give it three business days, and then five business days after receipt of it to, for the chair or designee to determine whether it needs to be modified or not. And that's one, one consideration for right now. Um, the other one is up top, is just to kind of clean uh, clarify some of the language, and the one thing that I'm trying to clarify is that no new tenancy, so for example, if there's a, is tighten it up a little bit relative to tenancy, so for example, if somebody has a site plan approval, and it's a retail use, and somebody's going in with the same use, but it's a new tenant, then I think there should be an ability for a business, a, a new business and the owner of the property to allow that to happen without having to go through a site plan process. If, you know, it's a different use, then that's a different story, but there should be a mechanism for easily to, to change out essentially like uses, so for example, you know, the Pondview Medical Center on, uh, on Pond Street, it's a multi-tenant building, one doctor moves in, one doctor moves out, technically, you know, we could look at this current bylaw in the books and say, that's a new tenancy, but as a practical matter, it's, it's like use for like use, so that's one thing I'd like the board to consider, um, because you know, the big picture, yes, we want to have site plan review, you want to take a look at sites when they have issues, and there's a public hearing process, and the, uh, butters would be involved, but from a business standpoint, if somebody's leasing property, you want to swap out a tenant for the same type of use, it seems a little bit cumbersome and an overreach to, to have to do that for every tenant that comes in and out, if there's, if they're the same use type. So that's kind of the, the big picture, what.
Uh, on that point, Rich, how broad, broadly defined is the same use? Uh, you know, doc- doctor for doctor, that's a, a no-brainer, but, uh, uh, doctor for, uh, uh, chiropractor, or doctor for, um, some other medical application, uh, and how, how broad does that get before you say, whoops, wait a minute, now it is different?
Uh, well, we, I would look at, I would look at the, so first I would go to the use table, so look at the use table, and then so within the C one and the B one, look at other, you know, defined uses or non-defined uses, and look there, like, I don't think we treat, uh, you know, a primary care physician and a chiropractor generally differently, have to look at our, we can look, we can, we can look a little bit more, um, you know, study up on the use table, but, um, it's, it's more, I think if you have, um, so for example, let's say it's a, a retail use, and then a doctor comes in, now we're, you know, changing it, those kind of situations.
Yeah, no, I, I understand what you're trying to do, and it seems to make sense, I just want to make sure that we go through a, a rigorous examination of how broad that, uh, sameness is before we agree to it. Secondly, um, going back to the first point you made about, uh, the planning board getting an opportunity to review all the F elevens, and then having to, to do so, uh, first of all, within three days of, of the applicant filing the thing, I guess, and secondly, to render a decision within five days thereafter, uh, that puts a burden on the planning board to hold a special meeting for that, uh, for that event, is that true?
Well, let me just clarify, so, the first, the first timeframe is, is on the building department to get it to you within three business days.
Yep.
And then the second part is, once you receive it, you have five business days to call a meeting, not, not to vote, not to decide it, but at least to call a meeting. So we can, we could certainly tinker around with that a little bit, um, but, uh, you know, I think, I will say the one thing that, you know, we, we were talking about this when we first got to this version of the site plan bylaw, and I know there was some resistance to, uh, having the planning board more involved, so I'm trying to see if I could craft something that has the planning board involved, but yet, at the same time, doesn't overburden the process.
I understand, would, would you put the language back up again, because it wasn't, but what I saw written there wasn't what you said, so I want to, want to make sure I understand.
All right, so, section G is, is three days
Yep.
after it's rendered, and then so power to, within five business days.
But it doesn't say how long we've got to render a decision.
It doesn't, um, I could clarify that. Um, well, so under the general powers, of the general power authority under the, under site plan approval, you have, uh, ninety days after close of the public hearing. Now, if you want to, if you wanted to tighten up that timeframe, we could do that too.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I've lost track of the conversation here, why, why, why are we doing this?
Why are we doing this?
Why, why are these amendments being recommended, or?
Two-fold, number one, we've been applying this bylaw, there was, there was previous concerns raised with the site plan approval bylaw. And so we enacted a new bylaw in November of twenty nineteen. I, I will tell you that I said at the time, we'll do this, but I think there's a good chance that we need to revisit, so I'm propose, having worked through this bylaw so far, and using and applying it, what I'm seeing so far is what I'm talking about as far as issues that have been brought forward.
And what are those issues?
Well, the issue with number one is site plan approval determination, right now, it's, uh, it's between Bob and myself, okay, so we'll go, we go through the prescribed requirements in the F eleven A one pro- uh, criteria, and then issue with determination, okay?
Right, which is exactly what we discussed and talked about and voted and agreed on.
Correct.
Right, so what's the, so what's the issue?
There are, there are residents, there are butters, there are a whole bunch of people that don't like decisions that come out of that office like anything else in life, we don't all agree, and so they, they, I think they feel that there should be a, a remedy to have, uh, it reviewed, and I'm not saying appeal, it's, it's not quite to the level of appeal, but it's saying, so.
All right, so then, shouldn't those concerned people be bringing their recommendations to us for consideration?
Well, there's concerned people on the, on, on this meeting, I know that, um, and yeah, they can make their recommendations, but I, I have heard some of these concerns already, um, so I'm somewhat carrying to you the concerns that are.
I still don't understand what the concerns are, the concerns haven't been stated. I don't know what the issue is.
Okay, if I issue, if I issue, uh, no, excuse me, Bob and I issue, uh, Bob issues a site plan determination is not required. If I issue, if I issue us, oh, no, excuse me. Bob and I issue, uh, Bob issues a site plan determination is not required. And you live across the street. And you say, no, that should require a site plan approval. How do you remedy that? So notice, awareness, you name it. Those things come into play. There's not, there's not a clear process for someone who may be aggrieved by a decision. There is a process, but it's cumbersome. It's not quick. It's not timely. Which would then impact applicant, you know, owners, property owners and people who might feel aggrieved by it.
Right. Yeah. So that's kind of the point, right?
Yep.
Right. You guys got to make the initial determination. If people don't like it, there's an appeal process.
No.
That, that process exists.
There, yeah, there is an appeal process, but it's. Yes. Well, first of all, it's not clear what that appeal process is. So it's not as clear as black and white.
There is no appeal process.
Mr. Quigley, go ahead. You, you may, may speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. So currently the abutters do not get notified. So in order to appeal, you would have to actually know something went on. Now, if for instance, on the Hill Street, no one knew that the building inspector gave an F eleven for this kid to have as many as twenty-five vehicles on that site. So what, how are you to know and appeal if you're not notified? So there's no notification. There is no ability to appeal. I tried to appeal. And I was told that my timeline had been eliminated. And it was eliminated because I was never notified and I found out through the grapevine. So, yeah, this is a huge problem.
Well, okay, I understood. Rich, Rich, uh, how, how are the F elevens, uh, publicized? To Al's point.
So the F elevens right now are forward to the, once the, the decision's issued, it's, uh, provided to the applicant and we forward the decision to the planning board.
What about to the public?
No, we don't. We don't give it out to them. I mean, we, we could, I suppose, but there's no, no process.
Well, it seems to me that, 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 that is a hole in the, in the project that, that how, uh, Al has a point. How would the abutter know that a decision has been rendered on an F eleven if, if it's not publicized?
I have an answer for that. That, that's very easy and can satisfy it. When someone submits an F eleven, similar to when they submit a site plan approval, they have to get in the butters list and a notification goes out. And so before that F eleven can be seen by the building inspector and logged in, all the responses from the abutters lists have to be supplied to him. That therefore, every abutter knows that F eleven was filed for the abutting property.
I think that's a little overkill myself. I think just posting it on, on the website would be probably adequate, but that's just me.
Well, by posting it, it's an invitation for comment, right? And if the public chooses to comment, then so be it. And that, and that their comments should be taken into consideration by the building commissioner and the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
So where would you, where would you, uh, post it?
Somewhere on the town's website.
No, I, I mean, if that, if there was an F eleven tab where people could look, I agree with that. I'd be okay with that.
Or I mean, I think, I think maybe if there's not a notification to a butters, it's probably something we should could consider, you know? When an F eleven is applied for a notification to a butter should go out.
I, I like that even better.
I, I didn't even think I would be commenting on it, but I, if, if there's a timeline to appeal an F eleven, but you're putting the onus on and a butter to figure out that an F eleven happened, that they have to proactively go to website, that's, I mean, no one's going to know to go look for the website that there's not, they should be proactively notified so that they can make a decision as to whether or not they want to appeal that decision.
Okay. I understand your point of view. Elizabeth's been raising her hand. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Oh, I, I was, I, my question really was, how would I know? Cause I live right here and I know what's going on in the streets near me. Um, abutters and abutters to the abutters. I feel there should be a way our notified. God, I just heard a gunshot. Um, and so, I mean, I find information out by seeking it on a daily basis. So I think that's a good avenue for exploration.
Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth.
My point.
All right, Rich, we understand the, the discussion. I think it needs some more thought before we proceed, but I understand.
No, I, and I, I just want to be clear too, for the record. Uh, this is kind of a starting point to this conversation. And, uh, and, and we do need to take a look at it. I do want to say though, just be mindful. I know there's, there's people that kind of focus the, the lens on Six Hill Street, which I can appreciate. But I think we do need to look at it and be in fair and balanced for, there's a whole bunch of other sites that happen in this town that we want to have a balanced requirement that works because while somebody might be saying that um, it's fine for Six Hill Street. Conversely, Al, you might say Rocco Plaza. You know, this might, it's put a burden on you when you swap out tenants that, you know, you might not like, or somebody over on Sherwood Road. So I just want to keep that out there. Or eighty-one Pond Street, for example. Al, I know the folks over there, you know, if we had to send this out, you know, they might not be too thrilled about either. So I think we want to just be balanced on how we put something in place.
Which I, I don't disagree with that, um, on Rocco Plaza, but I will give you for an instance where this would work on Rocco Plaza and, and the medical building that you brought up. If you had an office in that medical building and it only had one doctor, that's a zone two of the aquifer protection district. So their septic was limited to in size. And then the type of tenants they have in that building, uh, you could adversely affect that septic if you took the one doctor's office and say you put in five dentists. That's an increase of, uh, gallons per day from a hundred and fifty gallons a day per doctor to a hundred gallons per chair for dentist. So that's five hundred. They don't have the kind of flow in that building. And, and in some cases, I don't have the kind of flow in the, uh, Rocco Plaza to put specific tenants that generate a lot of water. So if you don't have a mechanism to oversee that, it's not done at the board of health level. So there are other instances, uh, environmentally that you would use this F eleven to cure a problem. Another instance is the building next to one ninety-four Main Street where it's had a revolving amount of tendencies. And it's in violation of the Drinking Water Act because they have a well that's not been, been certified by the DEP. And I know you, I believe you guys mandated a hookup there, but it's never been done. So the public's at risk with that drinking water. Another way that the F eleven would have protected the public outside a simple increase in vehicles from five to twenty-five on a lot on Hill Street. Many different ways that this thing should be ironed out. It protects the public many different ways. And yet it may adversely affect me at that one building. And guess what? I gotta live with it.
Yeah. No, and that, and those are all good points, Al. No, I definitely, I agree. I just, I just want to.
I'm not sure that contacting the butters would have solved all those problems though. But I do think it's a good idea to contact the butters. It would have routed the board of health, Gary.
Okay.
That F eleven would have been routed and the board of health would have said, hey, wait a second. You can't take a doctor at a hundred and fifty gallons a day and put in five dentists. It doesn't work for the septic.
Okay.
So then the water in, in the revolving tendency next to one ninety-four, those are all people drinking water. You can't have twenty-five people or greater drinking off of a well. It's, it's not allowed in the mass general law, but it's allowed to exist on that building. For years I notified the town, the town has done nothing about it. So if somebody, if Flint, Michigan happens at that building, it's on the town of Norfolk.
Yep. Well, we understand. All right. Uh, Rich has said that this is just the opening discussion on this particular potential, uh, revision and we'll revisit it again, but, but you've got two others that you want to present to the board. So please proceed to the next one.
Sure. And, uh, let me go back to the.
So Rich, what's, while you're pulling that up, what's your timetable or is this just the beginning of discussion? Are you looking to get this on the next warrant?
Sorry, I'm gonna just not screen share to answer the question. No, I, I think, I think realistically it's something that we're working on now and that it'd be something that we would target to do in the spring. It's not, there's not enough. You know?
Yeah, I, I was thinking there's probably not enough time because I saw the timetable is we have to have
Yeah.
everything by September tenth, I think it was for the next warrant.
Correct. Yeah. So it, it would be something that we would.
Work on through, through the end of the year, basically.
Well, I want to have it, I, like I said, next year is not sometimes that far away when it comes to this stuff. So I want to kind of try to get ahead of some of this stuff a little bit so we can have chances to dissect it. And, uh, so anyway, that, that, the same, the actually the same thing holds true for the next one. Well, not, not this one, I guess, but, well, we could talk about this one. So E, E two F conversion of single family dwelling to a two-family. Right now, um, this bylaw has been down to books and one of the, and one of the requirements is it doesn't apply to every home in the town Norfolk. So that's, uh, essentially you've got a, a home has to be in existence from nineteen fifty-three. That's when the first bylaw, with zone bylaws adopted. So this, this isn't available to every home in the town. But secondarily, it's, it's really essentially, it's the conversion of a single to a two-family home. Now granted, the, the single family home can't, I'm just gonna, gonna stop screen sharing because I can't see you, but maybe you can see me, but, um, it has a potential to alter the character of a, of a, of a neighborhood, maybe not from the outside, but the, the family type. And, uh, we're in litigation right now. So we'll get into specifics with that, but, uh, it is pending, but I, I do know that the, um, there is, um, litigation requireness requirement. Now, for example, I will say that if you want to alter your house and have two kitchens, two bedrooms, two bathrooms, and you can meet the, uh, sanitary code, building code, you certainly could do that. So you could have somebody in your house. Um, that's family related and you don't need to get anything but, well, anything, but you need to make sure the septic system works and you meet, uh, building code for whatever you add on to your home. But you don't need any special additional permits to do that. Um, so I know some people would say, oh, in-law apartments, you might've heard of the, that term or accessory dwellings, but there isn't anything really preventing you from allowing somebody to accommodate a family member. But this actually converts it out to a, a two-family that you could sell as a two-family. And, uh, this, and we do have two families that do not have separate utilities and we have some that do have singular utilities. So there's, there's nothing tied to the utilities necessarily either. Um, but nevertheless, I think this issue came forward with the ZBA more recently and the question posed was is this something that we would want to, is a, it's something that can have on the books? Um, and whether or not we perhaps should just remove it. So, um, that's why I'm throwing that one out just for general discussion with the planning board.
Rich, um, did I hear you correctly at the beginning of this where you said this only applies to houses built before nineteen fifty-three?
Yeah, cause if you look, um, I'll show you. The authorized conversion of a single family dwelling in existence at the time of adoption of this bylaw. The term of this bylaw, I guess it's, it's subject to, uh, interpretation, but generally when we say this bylaw, it's when the zoning bylaw was enacted unless it specifically puts a time associated with it. So sometimes when you put this kind of provision in there, you would say this section with a date, it doesn't. So whether you, uh, go in nineteen fifty-three a ladder, you could, this was back in, I'd say the best case, it was in place in nineteen sixty-eight. So it's been on the books for many decades, nevertheless. So, um, now, I know, you know, there are probably some reasons why people want to have it. But the thing is, in, under this bylaw, you need to have it as a two-family. So you need to meet the building code for a two-family as well. So you can't just get a special permit for a two-family and not comply with the building code. So converting it to a two-family has a whole host of requirements on the code. So, you know, there is additional work that needs to be uh, done to make that conversion happen. So I'm just throwing it out. That was, uh, uh, for discussion. And, uh, go ahead. Board first and then Al.
What's your proposed change to delete it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Al?
Um, so I was, I've been one person to actually receive a special permit to convert singly fa, single family house to a two-family. It was at one ninety-four A Main Street. I never followed through with it for a few reasons, but, um, I received that from the ZBA and I, you know, to me, if you look at the character of the center of the town with all the new housing going on, to try to restrict somebody that's stuck in the middle of forty Bs in that trans, transition area into the center of town from converting their house from a single family to a two-family, I think is a restriction that's not necessary. Uh, I think the town needs some more housing. So, you know, I think there's a second line, Rich, if you pull up that zoning, um, there's, there's a lot that protects the neighborhood. Um, if I could just show you guys. The second part says, no exterior changes are ma, are made, which in the judgment of the board do not conform to the single family character of the neighborhood. So, I mean, this is really, uh, protected and I, I, I sense that you said, you say you have one court case, but since nineteen fifty-three, has this been a problem where you want to eliminate it? You have the protection here. If it doesn't look like, uh, you know, a single family character, you don't approve it.
Yeah, well, uh, no, that's the case to be made. Now, I will say the one thing that the point you raised though is that, uh, so this applies to all the residential zone. It's not, yours was in the, your example was in the B one. This is applicable to the R one, R two, R three. Um, now if there was, you know, consideration to maybe look at more refined areas where you might want to allow that, fine. But I, I will say that, you know, to take a low density residential district that is really built around single family homes and then convert it to, uh, a two-family can have a detrimental effect. You don't necessarily know that at the beginning. It, it can happen as, as, uh, ownership, uh, changes over time. So.
This is sort of a problem we had with the, uh, excuse me, the duplex allowed in a, a new subdivision. How does it look like a single family home? I guess the question with this bylaw, are they allowed two driveways or just one?
It doesn't really specify.
That was, that was consequential with the duplex.
Yeah.
It was going to go in the subdivision up off of our Lawrence Street.
Right. So it doesn't specify, John. So it, I mean, it could be, it could be two.
I mean, we're building, you know, these duplexes on Valley Street. They're beautiful. We're building them. You guys actually pushed Secong Street, not you, the ZBA pushed Secong Street to incorporate duplexes. So you're, you're pushing it, you know, in the forty Bs around town and these aren't even around the center of town, but then you want to restrict, you know, people from doing it and, and places that have, had been allowed since nineteen fifty-three. I just don't understand.
Okay, uh, we understand, Rich. This is again, the opening discussion on this, uh, and I thank everybody for their input. Let's move on to the third one.
Let's move on to the third one.
Okay, and maybe on the, you know, maybe for this topic, I would suggest maybe let's see if the ZBA give them a special invitation to. Maybe join in this discussion because. They're kind of more on the front line dealing with this, is there a permit that they'll issue for a future meeting? And then. Last. Is contractors headquarters. With. Really relative to a few different things, but. One is equipment, some are vehicles, vehicle storage. And allowing. Essentially, a business that has. What I'll call. As a layperson, I, you know, I had, I'm not in the business, but. There's multiple scales of front loader, front end loaders, right? So. Backhoes and you name it, that other business types use. And yet, they might not necessarily be in the, the transfer earth removal. To find them a place where they could be lawfully. So that's in part what this is looking to do, which would be. In the off, two off highway districts, one is C1B, which is Shire Industrial Park. The other one, C1, a C1C is off of Sherwood. And then. Below, I'll just scroll down. On the screen is. Existing definition of contractors headquarters where there's. Some things that make it a little bit challenging to interpret, for example, right? And then our existing bylaws says all vehicles. Or equipment garage at the site would be stored inside the building. But yet we do. We do allow for. Outside storage of equipment by special permit. And we do allow vehicles, storage. To the rear of a lot by special permit, but here we're saying. You got to be inside the building and obviously we know that. Again, I know we're, the genesis is more related to Sixth Hill Street. But the, but the discussion from Sixth Hill Street opened up to look at. This issue across the, across the C1 district. And quite frankly, we have a bunch of different businesses in our town and our parks that use. This type of equipment that. Aren't necessarily in the earth removal business, so, and there is equipment outside. So trying to figure out a way how we could. Make this work for the business community that does deal with, they are contractors in the contract business. There's different type of contractors, landscapers and such to make this work.
You have no number on the allowed maximum?
I'm sorry.
Are you allowing three or five or as many as you want to what?
So if you're, so the vehicles are not. So that's in place right now, I'm not proposing to, to modify that, but that's.
I'm talking about earth removal equipment.
Yes.
Pieces of earth removal equipment.
So for that, if it's in the off highways, three or more?
Three or more?
You need a permit.
You need a special permit, yes. But that, that would fall under the existing provision. And then this wouldn't be allowed in the on highways, so it really wouldn't be applicable.
I don't quite understand the change you're looking to make.
Okay, well, let me try, try it again.
Rich, I think if we allow this, after going through this last two years with Hill Street. If we allow this in a zone that also, also allows residential, you're just heading for problems.
So. Let me answer that and I'll go back to Al's question. So the. We don't have, so if you, if you look at Shire Off Highway, there isn't homes. I could pull that up so we could look at on the map if you'd like to see. And then Sherwood, there isn't homes abutting that. So that's the two off highway districts I'm talking about. I'm not talking about the one that's, which is the C1D over by Hill Street and Valley Street. Nor the other corner, so I'm not, I do know that yes, there are homes that are there and there's existing residential neighbors. So I'm not talking about those two areas, but.
So you're proposing this only in those two areas?
Correct, yes. Okay. But I do, I do think, having said that though, I, I think, let me just go back, if you don't mind, just back to the screen share. I think we'd need to work some clarity on. The vehicle and equipment because. And again, just, I know I said this at the beginning, but I do want to just preface this again. I think we're going to have a few different discussions on this, so we can kind of work this through a little bit. But for example, when it talks about. You know, the definition for. Trying to go off the top of my head, there's one for the vehicle storage. I think it also includes outdoor storage. I can, I'll, I'll, I'll bring it so you could take a look at it. So there is some, a little bit of some. Push and pulls between how we're allowing things that I feel like we might want to try to better define. You know, so vehicle, equipment, materials, those kind of things.
Well, are we taking into consideration the proximity to residential areas? Like residential areas that abut. This particular kind of commercial industrial job site. People within walking distance and less of a commercial industrial business. That wants to have large pieces of equipment going in and out multiple times a day and night. I consider those very different circumstances for what exists over at Shire. And I think you said David Road.
Yeah.
I think essentially, essentially what Rich has got here is it's saying, instead of saying all of your equipment needs to be inside the building. It's saying if there's any equipment outside the building, it needs to be screened from view.
Correct, yeah. So, and to piggyback on that, so if you look on the screen. Let me zoom in.
So we're not sharing, you're not sharing anything.
Oh, all right, that would help.
But I think to Elizabeth's point, Rich is not proposing to do it in an area where there are residences.
So here's the, so here's the. So this one here, C1D. That's one and it, and truth be told, it might just be. This one, as we get through this, is this one. This one here, Sherwood and David, there are no.
So what, what's it, what is the language for the rest of the C districts? Unchanged?
Yeah, it's unchanged.
Why wouldn't we change it for all?
Again, we're taking into consideration the proximity to the residences within those off highway districts.
Right, but you're making it less restrictive. Why, why would you be making it less restrictive near the residential areas?
No, they're not near the residential areas. Let me go back to the map.
Well, there are some people that live on Sharon Ave, Rich.
Yeah, there, there are, so.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
The problem would end up on the chopping block, more than likely.
I mean, if you could condition it where nobody could drive out Sharon Ave, but I don't know.
This, this, this doesn't talk to site access. This simply talks about where equipment is kept and stored. Right, and it's basically what, the only thing that's changed is. Any equipment that's outside needs to be screened from view.
Yeah.
I don't know why that's objectionable, that seems perfectly reasonable. Right, but again, I, too often. We're hyper focused on either a certain event or a certain site with our planning and zoning. Planning and zoning are townwide applications of language. And I don't think we should be actively pursuing. Multiple versions of any definition, let alone contractor headquarters. We got to do our homework on the right way to write the definition of a contractor headquarters for the entire commercial district. Right, and with, with that language should come, hey, here's the contractor's headquartered language from seven other towns. And this is how they dealt with it, right? I mean, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. So. I mean, I, I'm open to consideration of changing the language, certainly. I think it should come with support from other communities. And I don't think we should be trying to, to cherry pick. Isolated sites and zones to do it. I think we should agree on language that we like and apply it. You know, to the commercial district.
I think that sounds reasonable, but you know, you also could. Identify as an excavation contractor is different than a, a contractor, you know.
But why, but why even get into defining contractors? Just say. Equipment, vehicles and equipment in, in construction areas stored outside is screened from view. Period, end of story, doesn't matter whose it is.
Well, it's the, it's the excess egress of, there's a, there's a big difference.
This doesn't speak to that at all.
There's a big difference between a Kubota and a D9 Ripper Bulldozer.
Very true.
Okay, and, and so if the bylaw allows the Kubota be there and doesn't specifically state to the D9. Bulldozer Ripper that they use in Iraq and across the world, then, you know. Then there could be some serious flaws in the definition.
Well, I also think that, that can, given that. The town has voted to, to allow residences in one of the four areas there in the C1 district. That should be taken into consideration and if we choose to allow. Outside storage of equipment and vehicles, et cetera. We may not want to do it in the area that we've also allowed residences. So I understand universality, but that, to me, you have to take an exception. Where it makes sense.
Yeah, I have no issue with it being in a, in a commercial zone, but what if it's a commercial residential. Combined zone, I think that's tough. And you know, we have a 50 foot buffer when a commercial building abuts a residential home. We could have some type of a buffer like this also.
Sure.
Where it abuts a residential district.
Yeah, so I think, I think the good thing, I'm sorry, the good thing is that I've heard different. Different ideas, different comments on it and I can. You know, again, gather some different. Bring you back some different options because. I mean, that's. Aaron, that's, again, that's part of the process of planning as well, right? So. I, yes, there are other bylaws out there, but we also have to kind of be mindful of. Norfolk is not, you know, X town, so.
Hey, Rich, can I comment as a resident, please?
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the universality comment that Aaron made as well, but again, I, being a resident, one of the residents. Who seen, seen the situation here at C1D and also abutting it. I mean, excavation and earth removal contracting is an intensive use for a site. And we know that it poses issues for noise, air pollution. Fluid leaks, spillage, when you're talking about the kind of volume of, of equipment that, that could be brought if it's just open ended. Okay, and that will negatively affect residents or quality of life, proximity of drinking wells, noise, everything. And we can't just throw out the residents who, who live there and those that have lived there for decades, even before. Residential was allowed in C1D by special permit. There's pre-existing residences there. I, it, it just has to be considered. It's part of why the residences were so opposed to the kind of volume of scope of project that was trying to go into Six Hill the past two years. So, I mean, we're, we would strongly request that heavy equipment storage be disallowed in C1D. Because of the unintended consequences that can happen in that area and, and it is a mixed residential and commercial area. And, and that has to be taken into account here. I mean, we can't just throw out the residents, you know, and, and take, say that this just has to be universal. And the potential for the issues here is just not prudent to quit. You know, excavators next door to, you know, a home, a person that has called a place home, you know, for decades. And, and if, if not disallowing, maybe at least consider parameters around a radius that says, you know, you know, residential homes within 500 feet. Because C1D, you know, some of those commercial spots, they're within 100 or 200 feet of R3 homes. Okay, so maybe there's a radius to be considered and so within that radius, you can't let, you know, heavy equipment, construction equipment. So, I, I mean.
I gotta thank you, Peter.
Can I add a final point? Walter, that, since, and, and the C1D district of Old Pond Street, Valley Street and Hill. From 1730 to 1979, this was a residential neighborhood. It's only been the last four years that it's allowed, 40 years that it's allowed commercial. Four commercial buildings, 19 residences in that area. It's almost five to one.
Yeah.
And if you took the time period, 1730 to 1979. These 40 years are a blip on the radar and I think the neighborhood has spoken in 2013 that it wants to keep its residential status.
Absolutely, Al, well, well said, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, the neighborhood spoke just this past year in proposing some zoning changes, saying that we want to see it shaped with a little more residential.
All right, as with the other two proposed changes, this is an opening discussion on this topic, so we'll revisit it again. I thank you all for your comments and let's move on. What's next on the agenda here? Let's see. Oh, we're supposed to approve minutes, I don't think the minutes are available, are they?
No, the, we did not approve June minutes at the last meeting, but I would make a motion to approve the minutes from the 16th of June.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Weddell.
Aye.
Mr. Peck?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Hold, stay.
Mr. Searle?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Okay, town planner updates on housing choice grant? Anything you wish to say, Rich?
I do, but I wanted to maybe yield the floor to Aaron if you wanted to talk about B1 stuff first and then I could fill in behind it.
Sure.
Uh, sure, I guess a couple of developments with the B1 stuff.
They're known related to you.
The conversation at B1 has started to take on a bit of a different twist. The 40R district has been proposed for consideration. I think it's got some legs. Will be interesting to see where it goes. We're having conversations about whether that 40R district should be one property or multiple properties or, you know, what the pluses and advantages of that are. Interestingly, it ties into the concept that some folks have been pushing that within the B1 district, there'd be a. Inner and outer, a lower density, higher density. Whatever you, whatever the right words are to call it, I'll call it an inner and outer for the sake of conversation where maybe the inner core becomes the 40R district. So some of the main benefits of the 40R district is a couple of things. One, it's, it's sort of a bridge between a 40B and town zoning where. You can, if the town goes through the process to get. Their vision of higher density resident, or higher density development. Really residential approved. Prelimarily, then the state will actually offer incentives as the development proceeds. So there are payments to the town for allowing that kind of development in the, in the district. I'm sure I didn't say that exactly right, but I did, I think I got the gist of it correct. So, you know, a lot of people, one of the main complaints about the 40B is, is that there's absolutely no provisions for the impact. Of that density being put on the town. So the 40R process actually tries to bridge that gap a little bit and say, you know. If, if the town can get their act together and agree on the type of project that they would welcome at a higher density, well then, there are. at a higher density, well, then there are some benefits that will come to your town for that process. So that's that's something, you know, that we're talking about again, and and I think it's got some potential. It it leads me to my my second point, which is, you know, we've had some conversations with the board about what the right process is forward here. I mean, sorry, at the committee, about what the right process going forward here is. It's it's not looking like we're going to have a recommendation for the fall town meeting. So that either pushes us off to spring or another year to the next fall town meeting. So, you know, this committee is is, I guess, serving at the the request of the planning board. And so I guess I guess what I'm saying is, is maybe we need to have a conversation about what the planning what the planning board really wants to do with the discussion that's going on at the B one committee. Right? So do we want to try and frame it in a different way? Are we in agreement with how it's going? You know, what are our, would we be willing to consider a forty R? You know, ultimately, the committee is going to make recommendations to the planning board, and the planning board is going to make those recommendations to the select board. So I I guess what I'm really getting at is, is maybe it's time for us as a board to give the committee some direction and 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 focus the conversation for the committee so that we can get to some sort of a of a resolution on the work of the committee and, you know, what are the goals of the committee? And, you know, maybe try and put a timeline on it so that we can we can accomplish those goals, support the planning board and what it's looking for and and move this process forward. So I I say that not necessarily for vote or or discussion this evening, but something for you all to think about. I I think we're going to have some conversations with the committee along the same vein. And I may very well be coming to to this board next month saying, you know, this is kind of the general tone of the conversation, but we really need we really need some direction on what our our end goal is. So that being said, I encourage you all to reread the executive summary and the mission statement of the committee and and decide if there's any changes or alterations we need to make to it, and we'll have this conversation next month, I think.
Would it?
Okay, Aaron, if they're if they're readily available, why don't you just circulate that to the board?
Yeah, I guess, Rich, I'll ask I'll ask you to do that. I think we do now have our own webpage through the town. A lot of the documentation that we've been collecting is is now stored. But, Rich, I'm sure everyone would appreciate an email with.
Yeah, I can, Aaron's right. We do have a B one committee page with the documents that are sitting there, the various ones that we're referencing, but I certainly could share different ones. One thing I want to plug, if you can, next Monday night, the seventeenth, one of the tasks that M A P C is coming back to the committee would is relative to doing additional refinement of a potential build-out that they're looking at under the proposed zoning. That's one task. The second task is additional further financial analysis as part of the rezoning. And then the one, the third task is to actually create some illustrations to visually provide people's a picture of of some of the things that we're talking about with populating different parcels with some scaled buildings and so forth to get a better visual representation, what this will look at. And the the fourth thing they're looking at is taking some of the parcels that are owned singly and maybe if they were to be combined, what that, you know, potential density would look like. And then we'll just segue in relative to the housing choice grant is.
What time is that? What time is that meeting, Monday night?
Seven PM.
Okay.
Walter, can I just have one comment?
Go ahead, Al.
So the forty R is a sort of a catch twenty-two. You know, when I first proposed one ninety-four forty B, it was a seventy-unit apartment building. And it really didn't go over very well. The town, if it was a forty R, would have received over two hundred thousand dollars for that apartment building. And I think what you're going to find with the forty R, and Aaron, tell me if I'm wrong, that it's going to come with a pretty dense apartment buildings. And so if if it really wasn't wanted on the other side of the bridge, would it really be those type of buildings be wanted in the center of town? That's just a point, you know, the pro and the con there that I I went through.
Well, I like the apartment building. I was sorry it got killed.
Yeah, so just to jump on what Al was talking about. So within the within the forty R district, you can have sub-districts as well, Al, so you can further refine what that density, what potential would be. So, for example, like if you, like you're doing townhouses now over there, it could have been a sub-district of just townhouses, not necessarily apartments. You know, and so you can, you can break it down further. And so there is a little more, just as we start to dive in this a little bit more, there's even the ability to to kind of refine it even more. Some of this, well, there is but the the trade-off, if you will, there is a lot more planning that would need to be involved to kind of put this all together. So there is a little bit more planning, a little bit more time, but I think the outcomes could be, you know, better long-term.
Well, let me let me take this chance to remind the board of some of the main goals of the committee at this point in time, too, right? I mean, the main goal of the committee is to to look at ways to promote commercial development in the B one district. A number of people have stated that the way to promote commercial development is to increase pedestrian traffic, right? Add people. There's a real only way to, the only one way to add people, that's density and housing. So to to Al's question, I think if there is interest in promoting commercial development, then there needs to be interest in housing and people and higher density. We have met some people with opposite opinions on that. And we're, those are some of the things we're working through with the B one conversations. But I do think the forty R provides an interesting opportunity where one of the, one of the main comments we get from the public is, is that we seem to be giving away this added density with no, with nothing in return coming from the developers. And I think the forty R presents that opportunity to say, you know, here, here, if we can agree on what the town will accept as a higher density development, well, then, hey, you actually get something for it. So it seems, it seems like a nice bridge. I mean, I think it's what we were headed. I think it's what we were trying to do with some of our recommendations. We just didn't have a vehicle to get the financial incentives tied to it. So I think the forty R becomes that vehicle, or I think that's how it's being pursued. So it's an interesting, it's an interesting topic, but I agree there there are some hurdles to get through to get it approved. I'll I'll add that I think I think the committee is interested in the fact that, and I think everyone here has seen the design guidelines that were put together by the M A P C and and the number of parties in town. And in, it intended intended to be an amendment or a supplement to the warrant articles that were put together last year. So in further, in other words, it includes three-story buildings. So the the thought was is that we would essentially be issuing those design guidelines to the state as the higher-density projects that we would accept as a town. With the the state then adopting it as part of the forty R, and then that would become that would become the framework for the forty R projects in town. So to give the people listening an idea of what might be an acceptable forty R project, I would encourage you to look through the design guidelines, because that's what, that's what we would be promoting, assuming the state would approve it. I'll add a couple of things to this. You know, I I think one thing that gets lost in our conversation is, you know, there seems to be a group of people that want to promote commercial development, but not change anything downtown. In other words, more single-story commercial development. I I personally just don't think, I mean, the single-story commercial development we have now struggles in certain locations, and adding more of it certainly isn't going to make it any more successful. I I I think there's a bigger picture that gets lost in this conversation, which is the town itself has grown over twenty percent in population in the last ten to fifteen years, and it's projected to grow another twenty to twenty-five percent in the next ten to twenty years. So, you know, that's another twelve hundred to eighteen hundred people that need to go somewhere in town. And we can put these people on our farms and in the woods, or we can put these people in the center of town and promote a a bustling commercial district. You know, a bustling rural commercial district, right? We're not trying to turn ourselves into a Wellesley or a Newton or anything like that here. So you know, these are all, these are all conversations that have been going on in the B one, and sorry, I'm rambling on here at this point, but the reason I mention it again is to get, I'll bring us all back to where I started. I I think I think we need some support from the board for how to make decisions within the B one committee so that we can make some agreements on recommendations for the warrant articles and proceed with this process. So again, I'd encourage you all to 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 catch up on what we've been doing, and I'm happy to talk to all of you individually if you want, or maybe I'm not allowed to do that, I guess.
Aaron, what have you done with the wastewater aspect of the development downtown? I know that they lowered the bedroom gallons per day rate, but to really do the type of work that you're considering, it seems to me like you'd want to increase the flow of that treatment plant if possible, or to, you know, generate a certain amount of flow available at that plant, and because commercial, real commercial development needs gallons per day.
So I'll I'll give you the short answer to that. For the longer answer, there's been a couple of conversations about that now at the B one committee meeting, so I encourage you to to find those on YouTube. One in particular where the, there is now a study underway to to either expand or add capacity to some of the existing plants in town. There is a group, Rich, remind me what the name of the group is.
Woodward and Curran.
Woodward and Curran, who's putting a report together. Not quite sure what the due date of that report is, but I I believe it's a good year out at this point, but that that's being looked at, Al. The the either the expansion of the existing plant or, you know, the construction of a new plant, and we've agreed on what the area that might be supported is. Coincidentally, it's it's, you know, again, I'll bring up the inner and outer core of the B one district, but for the sake of simple, simple conversation, you know, this inner core that, you know, might be a forty R district, it might be the sewer district, right? So maybe the four, this the improved sewer district is tied to the forty R district, right? So those are, those are concepts and discussions that are ongoing now at the B one committee meeting.
So on the screen is the updated settled on district sewer district area that Woodward and Curran is now doing the sewer load and float evaluation on. And what they're going to, one of the things they're going to be doing is work, you know, take some of the work of the B one committee and do some planning analysis based on potential build-out of of the B one. So combination of might be all commercial, mixed use and so forth. So the, what you see on the screen is is that district that we're looking at right now with them. So we're going to.
It's that, it's the bluer hatched district, right?
Yeah. That's the sewer, that's the sewer district?
Yeah, so I'll add some commentary to that in that we thought it wise to consider a maximum area instead of a minimum area. So, for instance, you'll notice there are some what are currently residential properties on page right, south of, yeah, where Rich is pointing. So those are currently not in the B one district, but that, you know, if if sewer was to be extended down the street, then those properties would have the right to tie into that sewer. So it was it was considered wise to plan for the possibility that they do that. Right? So again, from a, from a planning standpoint, Al, this this was the sort of the maximum size of a district that would be considered for sewer coverage.
The big district.
Yeah. It is. But I, so as they're again, so they're they're taking that, taking that district and then applying some of the zoning they're looking at to come up with, you know, ma, you know, a maximum, if you will, of what that sewer might be and not might or might not be to kind of help with that discussion. And, I mean, we do know that the plant I can tell you that there is unused capacity in the plant, but that map that you saw on the screen, it's not gonna that that plant's not going to obviously serve that whole entire district. So we'll have to work that through, but that that's one of the things that we're doing right now. Just to clarify, Aaron, we're really targeting to have this done, the sewer study done by February. We've got to be done by contract by June next year, but I think we're trying to target to get that wrapped up by February. So we will, and they, and we will have a future meeting discussion with Woodward and Curran when we get a little bit closer. We're probably not that far away, maybe a month or so, to talk about you know, the sewer issues related to town center. Other than that, that okay, wraps up the discussion.
So that's it on those two items, Rich?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think that concludes our agenda for this evening, unless there's other new business that needs to be brought to our attention.
I do not have any further business.
Okay, anything from the board?
No.
All right, then the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Weddleton.
Aye.
Mr. Searle.
Aye.
Mr. Peck.
Aye.
Mr. Hunt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all for this evening's participation.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.